All right, well, let us come to order now, please. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a school board meeting on December 8th. Mr. Kimball, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, sir. Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Carney? Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Sharp?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Webb is out of town and has asked to participate remotely. We're in the process of trying to track him down.
Mr. Sharp, I'll go to approve his participation for Senate seat, policy number 2323.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Dr. Jones, could you try to track down Mr. Webb on your cellphone? All right, would you please join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we come to recognitions and reports, and the first item on the agenda is recognizing two of the outgoing members of the school board, Susan Carney and Kiran Sharp. It's hard to believe that this day -- well, it hasn't come yet, so we come to praise you, not to bury you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
They say that every time that the membership of the school board changes, the board itself changes, and while we'll have some change for the good coming up that we look forward to, we cannot help but take a moment and reflect on what we are losing, and it is considerable. The efforts of Susan and Kiran over the years have been, I think, difficult to quantify. Their accomplishments and their dedication have both been immense. Their length of service is formidable. I think between the two of them, they have nearly about 30 years on the board. Each brings a style and an approach to serving that reflects their individual personalities. Mr. Sharp has a breadth of vision, a dedication to the community, and to a broad array of important aspects. His tenacity on issues is without peer, and we're going to miss him. Ms. Carney has served in a leadership position for several years, has been instrumental in setting us forward on a path to maintain our facilities that will be modern and that will serve us into the years to come, and she has had no small measure of vision that have made that possible at times when perhaps it didn't seem possible. I will now just open the floor, and we'll have plenty of time for farewells, but we should recognize the great work that these two valued public servants have accomplished over the years. Ms. Ward, we'll start with you.
I'd just like to thank both Kiran and Susan for their mentorship. As most of you know, I'm fairly new to the board and learning the ropes as I go, and I couldn't have done this without both Kiran's and Susan's input. I look to them often, look to their experience and their willingness to help time and time again, so I will miss that, but thank you for all you've done for our schools, for our students, and for your fellow board members.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Lawrence?
I'll be semi-short since they both embarrass easily. First, I think the one thing -- some people don't know about Kiran, it's not just 17 years on the school board. He's one of the very few people who also served on city council, and I think in this entire city of 13,000, if we have enough to, you know, need one hand to count them all on, I'd be surprised. So when he would talk about budgets and school budgets, there was never any doubt that he was only looking at the schools. He was always looking at the city as a whole and reminding all of us that, you know, as people said, we're all in this together, but, you know, when you're up here on the school board and you're looking at the school budget, sometimes you can get a little focused on, well, this is just the schools, and he would always remind us, it's not, not even His work, especially with students, with kids, with, you know, the Fairfax Partnership for Youth over years and years and years, is just incredible dedication, and I can't even think of how many thousands of hours he spent. And even when you disagreed with him, and, you know, we all have at one point or another, you never doubted that he believed what he believed, and he was doing what he was doing for the absolute best reasons and with the best interest of the kids, always in the fore. I mean, that was one thing you could never argue with, whether it was talking about what to do about resurfacing a field or what to do about literacy. So he's been great. I've worked with him since I was on the planning commission, talking about building schools and how the city was changing, you know, how the city was changing from the old sleepy Falls Church days of single-family homes with an ice rink not too far from here to lots and lots of apartments and people coming in and out, and it was just a sea change. So on the one hand, I'm going to miss him, but it's been like Susan. I live at Great Falls in west. I go down west, not too far, and I run into Kiran's house. I go down Great Falls, not even nearly as far, and I run into Susan's house, so I'm very lucky that way. With Susan, what can I say? With Susan, what can I say in public that won't get me in trouble?
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. I had the honor of serving on the planning commission with Mike, her husband, who is a developer, taught me a ton, because I'm a middle East specialist, congressional affairs, government affairs. This is a welcome distraction from things like ISIS. And I first really met Susan when we were having some daycare issues, and I got put onto a daycare advisory board, and afterward she called me up, she goes, hey, you know, could we get you to join? I can't even remember what advisory committee. And at the time, I was on the library board, I was on the planning commission, and doing those two and the daycare advisory board in a very short time, my wife made it clear that if I volunteered for anything else, I would have to sleep with one eye open, so I had to decline, but she kept coming back to me, thinking about the school board, think about the school board. And my problem was, I loved the planning commission. And then finally, when there was a vacancy, honestly, she just wouldn't let go, and she did that for several. Michael here is another one who was recruited at gunpoint. And she taught me a ton, because I came in having a lot of experience, thinking I really knew what was going to happen when I got on the school board, and it turned out that it was all completely new. I knew the very top, and she could explain things like the fund balance and why it's a three-year span of events and why nobody else will ever understand it. So, you know, I can't even begin to explain the number of questions she answered, and the way she did it didn't make me feel like I was as dumb as I felt, which I've got to tell you, when you come up here and it's like, you know, explain to me, why are we doing this? And she's like, okay, let me explain. And then you got it, and you fully understood it and supported it, and that's what people need up here, and that's what, you know, everybody here who's going to help out, you know, we've got Phil coming on, we've got Aaron coming on, we've got to try to do the same thing. The difference is, we don't have 10 years under our belt, you know, sometimes you add up two of us and we don't have 10 years under our belt, but, you know, the good news is, she's not going anywhere anytime soon. She's not going far, and we're not going to stop relying on her, I'm certainly not. So thank you. Both.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. This is a delicate matter to ask somebody to speak at their own farewell, but there are two outgoing members, and so, like Tom Sawyer, you are present at your farewell, which is a rare opportunity granted to few, so if you'd like to say a few words about Mr. Sharp or your time on the board, Ms. Carney, please.
Thank you. I'm not really going to say anything about my time on the board. I may make some comments later about that, but I do want to say a few things about Kiran Sharp, who has been my colleague and taught me a ton about the board when I first came on the board. Not only is he one of the few people in our city who has been on both city council and school board, but he was on city council first and then chose to come to the school board because of his dedication to the kids and the schools, and I think that is an only time event probably in the history of our city and one that I respect a great deal. I know Mr. Sharp has been frustrated at times because he has been the flag waver for many years before I even got on the board for the topic of year-round schooling for our kids, and he has tried every year for many years to get the community in the board to pay attention to that and to prioritize it, and my observation is that because of what he's done, as time has passed, we have in fact moved quite close to year-round schooling for our kids, just in a different way than would have been imagined 10 or 15 years ago, and I thank Mr. Sharp for helping us get to that point. For those of you who don't know, over the last several years, we've expanded our summer school program for kids who really need that education in the summer. It's a five-week program now instead of two or three. It includes classroom time, enrichment activities, and other things that those children need to stay in shape in the summer and to have the same opportunities that other kids in the city do. We also have in the summertime now lots and lots of opportunities for other kids to catch up, take extra classes, and so on, and we're on a tangent with this school division and this school board with finding flexible ways 12 months a year for kids to get education in person, online, and through other means, and that's largely through Mr. Sharp's focus on year-round schooling. So I'm not sure he envisioned it would happen quite this way, but I'd like to tell him that I think it has happened during his tenure on the school board, and so I really thank him for that, and I thank you for your service. You're terrific, and I appreciate your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carney. Mr. Sharp?
Well, thank you very much, Susan. Very, very kind. I did try to capture some of Susan's contributions to the board when she was very gracious to pass the gavel on to a new generation of leaders at the beginning of this year, and I'll just say, I don't think anyone that I can recall leaves the board with a stronger portfolio of accomplishment than Susan does. We talk about final exams or those kinds of things, but I think the summative assessment here is just outstanding, and I want to congratulate her on a really tremendous, tremendous career on the board, and I look forward to staying in touch. But I also want to express thanks to the many who served on this board. I feel like I've stood on the shoulders of some giants who served in this kind of position before, Jesse Thackery, Betty Blystone, Lou Olum, certainly, and then those that I've had the pleasure of sitting and standing shoulder to shoulder with over 17 years. And as some have mentioned, I did serve on the city council and then on the board, and there were actually, well, a small group of those, including Lawrence Webb, who is currently joining us on the phone, and the other was Cindy Garner, Gardner, pardon me, Garner, who began on the city council and then was appointed to the board, then elected to the board, and then for many years was the legal advisor for the board. I do want to point out something that I think is maybe a timely thing, and I'm sorry to take some time on this, but because it's timely, I will. And that's one of the great experiences that I had was trying to locate a homeless shelter in Falls Church, when most people in the vicinity of any such facility would not have wanted such in their backyard, so to speak. So it was my task to go out and try to find someone in the commercial area of the city who might be willing to place such a facility, which was only going to be a winter time overflow shelter in any case. But the person that we happened upon was the owner of the Washington Flyer Transportation Business, a fellow named Farouk Masood, and we approached him with the idea that some of his facility above a garage where he repaired his cars and vans might accommodate 12 or 15 or so people on a cold night, and out of the blue, he was enthusiastic about doing it. Did it for three years, didn't ask for a dime, and I want to say, that's the kind of person that I've had the privilege of running across many times in my experience, from all different walks of life, rich and poor, Baptist and Muslim, Catholic and atheist, and it's been my privilege to serve that kind of community, and I thank you for being that kind of community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharp. I see that Mayor Tarter is here, and, Mr. Mayor, do you have a couple of words?
Sure. I'm delighted. It's interesting to be on this side of the dais for once. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you so much. I really wanted to be here to-
The vice chair does point out you have three minutes.
I appreciate the opportunity to allow me to come before you tonight. I really wanted to be here and honor the special and great contributions you all have made to this city. I think, what is it, 26 years combined service, almost as long as I've been alive, so it's really incredible dedication that you all have given to this city. I personally spent many early mornings and late nights with you folks, and I think most of the public probably doesn't realize all that goes into being on the school board. So much work, reading reports, doing research on your own, talking, meeting with constituents day in, day out, whether school's on or school's not on, you all are out there doing that work, coming up with creative ideas. I'm constantly amazed by the kind of new thinking that is coming out of this city and how we're a leader, even though we're a small community, a small school system, but still a leader, both in the region and frankly throughout the country in some of the things that we're doing, and you all are the reason why, particularly you two, Susan and Kiran. I know you guys have had some great ideas over the years, and it's been my pleasure to work with you. Even before that, you had years of volunteer dedication, and that doesn't go unnoticed as well. You've been just a great part of this community, and I wanted to let you know how much we on city council and as a city as a whole appreciate your good work, our schools, you're leaving them in great hands, they're among the best in the country, and so all I have to say is, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We could go on all night, but I think it is important just to note a couple of more aspects of their accomplishment. I think Mr. Sharp's commitment to public education and to the community and to the values that make Falls Church such a great city to live in are noteworthy, and I would also note that on a personal level, I think, I'm not sure what the exact tally is, but that you and your wife have fostered, I believe, 20 children over the years, phenomenal commitment, selfless. His commitment to the IB program, Lou Olum, and his vision is something that Mr. Sharp looks to give enduring life to, and, you know, his knowledge of the history and details of just about everything in Falls Church is encyclopedic, and thank heavens we'll still have him as a resource. And Ms. Carney, again, with respect to, you know, the vision for the George Mason site, you've had a key role in pushing that forward. You have a persistence and a vision that we appreciate. Taking the long view, I mean, I don't think it was as long as then as it's turning out to be, but closing the teacher pay gap is something that I think you really helped to drive as well, and again, I think that's something that will make a structural change and have benefits for the community for years to come, and again, glad you're just down the street and very glad to have had the chance to serve with you. At this point, we have a couple of very small tokens of appreciation.
Mr. Castillo?
Sir?
Would you indulge the clerk for 30 seconds to say farewell to two school board members with whom he has worked for many, many years?
Absolutely.
30 seconds, really.
No, please.
You know, first of all, Mr. Sharp, when one of your former colleagues, Rosara Garibera, left the school board, I went up to her after the meeting, and I said, Rosara, I'm going to miss you terribly, because for the time that you have served on the school board, I always felt that you were the heart of the school board. You really, you really were. Your heart was in it, and you felt for every one of our students and every one of our families. And, Mr. Sharp, I have to say that, to me, you have been the conscience of the school board for as long as you have served. You've always reminded the board to take the right path, the ethical path, even though it's not always the easiest path, and you have always shown yourself to be a principled leader, and it has been an honor working with you, sir. And, Ms. Carney, you have given so much, time, work, creativity, ideas, I think as Mr. Lawrence said, that you're the one person who's actually been able to encapsulate and explain the fund balance perfectly, and so that's one of the things that I'm stealing and taking with me. But honestly, you know, from my perspective, I think the single greatest gift or most important gift that you left the school board, and you always reminded us about this at the opening of our first budget session, is that when we work together and when we share ideas and we need to listen to each other, but we also have to keep in mind this concept of generous interpretation, to always assume that the person, because they do, has the best motives in mind and really wants to work the same objective, towards the same objectives, and that concept of generous interpretation is one that has served me well. Sometimes I forget it, but I have to remind myself. But I wanted to thank you very, very much for that, and I am going to miss you as well very much. Thank you. It's been an honor serving with both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. All right, Ms. Carney wishes to rebut this.
I'm so sorry. You know, I just want to say one thing, because it hasn't been mentioned up here, and it's not really about me, but it's about this board and this community, but it is a thing I'm the most proud of, that we have accomplished during my time on the board in 10 years, and that is putting programs in place to provide for our neediest children all the things they need to be successful, whether it's food during the summers and the weekends and in school, whether it's internet access, whether it's books, whether it's warm jackets in the winter, whatever it is that our children need, this community and this board have banded together to make sure that no child in this city is hungry, that no child is cold, that no child misses out on an educational opportunity because they don't have the tools to learn. And I mention that right now because I want to charge all of you who are in the audience and the people who are my colleagues on the dais with keeping that up. Please don't change it. Please don't change it. It's really the proudest accomplishment of this board, I think, from my tenure.
Ms. Goodell, would you like to offer any words? I'm not putting you on the spot or anything, but I-
No, and I've been on the board, I think about the same time that Susan started, I was shortly thereafter, and I have learned quite a bit, just listening to the expertise coming from Kiran and from Susan, things that I didn't know how operational the governance worked in the school board or a city, so I have to say, I want to thank them for that and for their, many times, their ability to explain things to the community, to myself, so I can understand what is going on as well in the city, and so I just want to thank them. I do appreciate their service and their commitment and great dedication and the many hours that they put in. I don't think people realize just how many hours, and they always do it with a big heart. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would note that Mr. Webb is participating remotely, and I'm sure that he has comments of his own to offer, but unfortunately, our technology arrangement probably would make for a very difficult exchange, so, Mr. Webb, we'll give you some time down the road, and apologies that we can't make this happen better. I see that Mr. Shields has come into the room. Mr. Shields, do you have any words that you would like to offer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's great to be with you all tonight and celebrate the service of Mr. Kiran Sharp and Susan Carney. It's been great to work with you all. When people think of our school system, they tend to immediately say, it's a fantastic school system and has a great reputation. It's a powerful force in all of our lives. Well, the reason that it is that way is because of people. It's because of individuals who stepped up to make it that way, and you all have done that. You've shown such amazing leadership. Kiran, you, I think, with your experience on the city council, going back, way back in the 90s, but carrying that to the school board, it's been, I've learned so much from you, and you've always challenged me to think about how we do our jobs differently. You've challenged us to think about the quantitative aspects of how we tell our story and how we measure performance, and that's so valuable. And Susan, I can't think of how many 7:00 mornings we've spent together and late evenings spent together, trying to chart out the fiscal path of the city and the school division. I know your greatest passion is about the children that you mentioned in your comments. What we've worked on most is probably the stuff you don't like the most, working through the numbers and the facilities, but you've done a great job with that, with such a steady hand and just a long-term focus on the future, both of you all. Thank you all. It's been an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. We have two small tokens of our appreciation. I will let Dr. Jones introduce the first. We have two plaques here, and, Dr. Jones, would you tell us how these came about?
Yes, we, you know, we really tried to think of something unique for the two of you because your contributions have just been unbelievable, and so as we started to think about what can we give people that have given so much, and we thought, what would be unique? Well, you've really helped build the school system, truly, in what you've given to us, so we took our school board picture, and then we had a caricature drawing of the school board made into Lego people, and so, because you have been such builders, and then at the top it says FCCPS School Board, and then all around it are just different things that both of you have contributed to. Some of these recent, the Thomas Jefferson Wing, 100% graduation rate, both of you held our feet to the fire on that. Building Jesse Thackery preschool, that was not an easy project. The GM MEH process started way back in 2000 and way before I was here, '07 or '08. Equity and Access is on here, and I think we've heard that over and over tonight because both of you have been so passionate about that, and down at the bottom is Personalized Learning. And, you know, when we were planning tonight, our next presenter is actually Apple, who's here with us, and two of you were, and at the very beginning, when you knew we had 35 laptops at the high school and very limited wireless and wanted us to get back on track, and when you talk about year-round school, you were instrumental in helping us get our hybrid learning program where it is and giving us the support, because we have to have a courageous school board that allows us to be innovative, and sometimes everything doesn't go perfect, and sometimes it does, and that's great, but you allow us to do that, so thank you for all the service that you've given. And, Mr. Castillo, if you could present their plaque for us, and we can get a picture with Mr. Brett, I want to make sure we-
Okay. Happy to do that.
I'll hand this one to you as well. Down here? Down here? We'll get your picture. And we'll get you guys a copy of this Lego people. You want, you want us to all come, you can do that one first, yeah.
What do you want, John?
You want? You just, you see the two of your own character?
And as they say, if there's more, if you leave right. Inefficient, we also have, from the BIE, a BIE partnership, Great Pathway, and we're going to be a Great Pathway and will endure in future schools. So, the following text has been engraved for you, Ms. Carney, Susan Carney, School Board, 2006 to 2015. That does sound slightly funereal.
Oh, my God.
But that is for you.
I told you I had it set, right?
And then, for Mr. Sharp, Karen Sharp, School Board, 1998 to 2050. You've had a long and prosperous career, so thank you very much. Now, maybe we can get a picture with everybody here?
Yeah, do you want us down here, John? Or up here?
Wherever you want. Come on down, okay. Karen, sit. Every mile's a run. Now, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, and as Dr. Jones mentioned, it relates to the Apple Distinguished School Award. Dr. Jones?
And I would like to invite Dr. Eric Wood to come forward and talk to you about distinguished program.
Man, how do you follow that? And so, just before I begin, it's a privilege just to be here specifically on this night, and so I think of, my mind was swimming, and I do this all over the country, and I've never seen such a testament to service that was just shown tonight. And so, I think of a couple of things. One, service to others leads to greatness. The second one, what separates the ordinary from the extraordinary? Dedication. We've heard two colleagues come up and say that. And so, it's just a humbling privilege for me to be here tonight, so thank you, Dr. Jones, for the invitation. And so, my name is Eric Wood. I'm a K-12 Development Specialist with Apple, and so, basically with Apple Learning, and we have our colleagues here, Ellen and Rafi, and I full compliment of the team, but what we just saw was breathtaking, and so we don't see it, and we wish we could replicate it throughout the hundreds of boards that we work with. So, before I begin this presentation, just kudos. So, why are we here tonight? So, this journey began with Dr. Jones about almost three years ago, and she had a vision for personalized learning. And so, we started having deep conversations, tech committee meetings, right, Lisa, and school board meetings, and all kinds of meetings, man. We were meeting it up and emailing it and reviewing plans, and this is an interesting journey towards academic excellence. And so, about, I would say, the springtime, we, Apple asked us out in the field, are there any schools or programs that are doing anything innovative? And I always talk about Dr. Jones and always talk about the great work that's happening at Falls Church, and so, we need some evidence of this. And so, Apple, there's five categories that Apple recognizes schools on. One is visionary leadership, compelling evidence of success, innovative learning and teaching, where we're all the learner again, it doesn't just stop with us. And so, when we look at these categories and thinking about, you know, where we've come as a district, because it's not about the technology, you know? I go into schools all the time, they have the technology, but they haven't transformed the learning. The focus isn't the learning. And so, I've spent 17 years in public education in this area, and so, you guys are getting it right, and the journey doesn't stop. It is something that's ongoing, and I like what you said, Ms. Carney, about keep it going. And so, we, there was a book that had to be created, where's Jean? So, there's a book, and I don't know if you guys have seen this book, but it's an awesome story of Falls Church, and it tells the journey. And I was actually so impressed with this, I asked, we had Dr. Jones present it at the Virginia School Boards Association, and people were like, "How did that happen?" And so, when the mayor talked about, you know, not just the leader regionally but nationally, it's happening, and you guys know it. And so, this is just a thankless job, and so, Apple would like to recognize Falls Church City Public Schools for 2015 to 2017 as an Apple Distinguished Program. It's a huge honor, so thank you. So, there is, what I'd like to do now is, we have an actual plaque that I'd like to present to the chair, Mr. Castillo, and then we have banners, one for the district and one for each of the schools. So, what we'd like to do, if we could get everyone initially to come up, and then we'll take individual photos by school. Is that okay? All right? All right.
All right.
I get my colleagues to help me? Yes.
Should have been in the front row in this one, dude.
I didn't, because my hair is a mess.
I just have to be here.
Other side of here, yeah.
Here we go, one, two, three. Please, I'll move one second. Hey, suck a gun in here.
I'm not stealing a warning.
All right, thank you, everybody. And, see, Dr. Wood would like to just give us a little bit more background on the program, the selection process, and-
Yes, so, they asked colleagues who are actually in the field to, that work at Apple, myself, to actually go around to the schools and have them apply to become an Apple Distinguished School or Program. And so, based on the five best practices, compelling evidence of success, visionary leadership, flexible learning environments, innovative learning and teaching, and so, when we look at all of these practices, there's evidence that has to be collected, and so that is put into an interactive book, an iBook. And so, that was completed, actually, and it gets screened by educators at Apple to just say, "It's not about the technology, but how is the technology impacting learning in the community?" And so, based upon the vision that Toni set forth for personalized learning, looking at how she shared that with her building principals, and so, can't happen in a, you know, in an island, so, huge kudos out to the principals here at Falls Church for really embracing that. And so, this is a journey, and I was a principal, and I've done this work. It is difficult work, and so it can't be done without communication and how we communicate around expectations. And so, that book is screened at the highest levels at Apple, and because people ask us all the time, "What schools are using your technology and that are doing a great job?" Not just with the tools, but how is it impacting the learning, and that's the focus. And so, we read that, we come back, we talk to the staff, we talk to Dr. Jones, multiple conversations about it, and so, it's just, it never stops. And so, it's an application process, so this award is good for two years. And so, if we want to continue this, we would come back and make sure it's still innovating here. We're still innovating, and so it's not something that we just give people. So, hundreds apply, but only a few are selected. So, it's a huge honor, like I said, I've done this across the nation, and I haven't seen a show of just actual, I guess, humanitarianism, you know? That's just up here on the board, and it takes a strong superintendent with the support of their board to do this, and to really have buy-in about why we're doing it. It's not about, oh, saying that we have tools, but it's about, look at the opportunities that we're providing for our children, because at the end of the day, I'm a new father, and no sleep, so if I'm stuttering a little bit, please forgive me. But, six weeks, but I'm not counting. And, you know, I tell you, it's just begun, I've just begun on this journey, but at the end of the day, we're supposed to provide our children with options, and so, they shouldn't just be limited by where they went to school or their zip code of what they can do. And so, the decision that you guys are making of providing your students with any option that they want, and so, that's, I collapsed it a little bit, but it's a heavy screening process. It's a lot of schools that I have to break the bad news that they did not make it, and schools that were in the program that did not do what they were supposed to do, and they're not in the program anymore. So, I'm also the bearer of bad news. But, our focus is the learning, and so, I'm happy to support, we're partners, and we've been on this journey for three years and we'll be on it for the next three and beyond. So, thank you for allowing me to come up here, and I look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is American Education Week, GMHS and Additional Support Staff Recognition Letters. Dr. Jones, anything you'd like to add on this?
These are just additional letters that came in after Amanda presented for us, I think at our last meeting, and we just wanted you to be aware that more people did send letters than that they're all on Board Docs for you to read.
Thank you very much. Now, we come to item 3.01, Public Comments and Requests. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. We have four speaker slips this evening, starting out with the topic of solar for our schools. Sunita Kavthakar? Did I get that right?
Yes, yes, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sunita Kavthakar, and I'm a junior at George Mason High School. I would first like to start off with thanking you all for coming here- I would first like to start off with thanking you all for coming here. I think you guys are the unsung heroes. Me and my classmates have not fully appreciated the work that you guys do for our school. Along with that, I am the youth representative for VPIS, which is Falls Church Village Preservation and Improvement Society. Just a few weeks ago, Tim Stevens, Jeff Peterson, and Ms. Erin Gill met along with myself and discussed solar for our schools. In September, VPIS sent a letter to both the school board and city council asking for a review regarding various options to obtain a solar energy system. Currently, the most popular option of interest is a financing program known as Power Purchase Agreement, or PPA. This risk-free system entails a third party who would own, operate, and maintain the solar system as long as the school would agree to cite the system on their property. Our school would be able to maintain stable and low-cost electricity from PPA. VPIS would like to thank you for your time tonight and encourage both the Falls Church School Board and city council to consider our proposal for a PPA at our local schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to come and speak to us tonight. Next, we have a comment about the budget from Amanda Blanchard. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We officially enter the season. We'll spend lots of quality time together. This evening, you'll hear from our three professional advisory groups, our professional staff, our support staff, and our administrative staff recommending things for our upcoming budget season. As the Falls Church City Education Association Local President, just wanted to reiterate some of those things that you'll hear and maybe add a couple of things to make sure that we keep in mind as we walk through the budgeting process. It breaks down into three categories. Number one, salary. We are halfway through our year two of our four-year plan regarding competitive salary agreements for our staff in comparison to neighboring districts. We encourage you to enter year three of that, which would also include that step increase and adjustments to the scale as needed. In that same section, to make sure that we still consider those individuals at the top of the scale, there are folks who will not get a step increase because they've been with us, have been dedicated their careers to us, and are now at the top and the far right of that scale. There's nowhere else for them to go. So, these adjustments and these steps don't necessarily impact them in the way that we would want or hope for them to feel the value. So, do keep that in mind as we move forward. Does that look as a COLA? Does that look as a bonus? What does that look like in terms of how to make sure we take care of them as well? Second, class size and staffing. You guys have committed yourself to small classes, and we support you in that, and we'll help you support in that. That doesn't necessarily mean classes of eighteen and twenty like we used to have. That does mean that they've grown a bit, but we're still trying to maintain a normal, for us, Falls Church standard of small classes. That does require staffing changes at times, and I know sometimes the numbers may tell us that we've got what we need, but I think if we explore a little deeper with our staff, that that may not always be the case in terms of what feels and what's best for those children. So, even though the numbers may say we have enough staff in certain areas, do we really to service the needs of those students? Because that's what we're here for. We're here for them. And then, lastly, benefits, making sure that we still continue to have the same level of benefits. We would love it if there's no increase in the costs of our health insurance. I'm not sure if that's realistic, but we can always say, "Hey, we would love for you to absorb those costs, if there are any," but we can discuss that. And then, also, things that I think you've heard over the last few years is that our professional development funds have kind of been reallocated to other areas, and we understand why. We know that there's new programs that we're learning, we have to spend money on that PD, but we're losing out on some opportunities that we have to go and participate in other things or having to pay for it out of pocket, which sometimes folks choose to do. But it would be nice if we could perhaps reinstate or figure out a more creative way to get people to those conferences that they want to go to, and I know, so that they feel that they've not only done the things that we need them to do as a district, but also reached out to colleagues in perhaps a different area. Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you in January.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. Our next speaker is Sylvia Malm.
Good evening. I'm Sylvia Malm, 207 Pennsylvania Avenue, and I just wanted to take a moment at the very beginning just to also give my thanks to Susan and to Karen. I personally experienced working with Susan when she was the board liaison to the Special Advisory Committee, and I want to thank you for all your work with us and to Karen, who's reached out. I now know to multiple people around the community, and I just want to thank you both very much for your service. I'm an eighteen-year resident of Falls Church. For more than ten of those years, I've been on the Special Education Advisory Committee, which pales in comparison to everything else that all of you have been doing, but that's the one thing I've been able to do. I'm a parent of two students who've been participants in the special education program in the city. I'm here tonight representing my own views, not those of the Special Education Advisory Committee, but I wanted to circle back with you after I spoke with you on November 30th to let you know how our December 2nd meeting went, and you'll have your own firsthand account because Mr. Ann Kuma was able to comment, as well as Mr. Lawrence, our board liaison. So, you have inside information, but I just wanted to let you know that the main point I was trying to make with you then was that we had plenty of work to do, and we really needed to get started to do it. And I'm pleased to report that on December 2nd, quite a lot of work did occur in a very constructive manner. And so, just to illustrate, and you'll be able to see the minutes of our meeting and that sort of thing, but these pages, four to five pages of activity ideas that we generated at our first meeting and were unfortunately unable to work on in November 2nd meeting, but we did work on them in this last week's meeting. So, we have more than we can do in one year, but one point I wanted to make is that these activities are all very much in line with the activities that the board asked us to focus on, every single one of them. And we, of course, understand that, you know, we're going to be making recommendations, but I just wanted to let you know that these are in line. And secondly, that was secondly, very productive, also within your priorities, and also, in terms of participation, I counted, and I'm not the person writing the minutes, so I didn't have this all written down myself, but at least five of our ten members volunteered, and I think probably more, because I'm sure I'm forgetting, to actually lead several of these activities. So, our January next steps will be to each of us develop a one-pager on the thing that we are leading, and we have a format that we'll be following to do that. And I expect that we have momentum, and I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker this evening is Allison Kuchma. Welcome, Ms. Kuchma.
Good evening. I've come before you to sort of talk the same thing about, that Sylvia talked about, you all don't go to the Special Education Committee meetings, but you guys have missed some kind of exciting days. And I just wanted to share with you, and Michael, I really appreciate you attending the meeting. It's nice to see other board members there, to see what's been going on. And I just want to share, you know, I find it really distressing that the chair wanted to start work right away, and there's a lot of work to be done, as Sylvia says, that more than we can do in a year. And I say "we," I'm not on the committee, but I participate through the Parent Engagement Subcommittee and as a parent volunteer, and to watch members who, I did a Freedom of Information Act request to see if there had been complaints about last year. There has been nothing. So, that these five or six members, five members of the committee are suddenly rewriting history and coming forward and saying that last year was so terrible. I think Hillary Crockett said, you know, she was aghast, but she's not been able to articulate what she was aghast about. And someone else said that their stomach hurt. I mean, these are adults, and so they took up two whole meetings with this, just going back and forth about motions to get Dr. Smirnoff off the committee when she'd only been chair for five minutes, and why whatever happened, which they have yet to be able to name or identify, that went on last year that was so distressing for them, they're saying that Dr. Smirnoff should be off the committee. But I think that it looks like the committee has moved past that, and there has been great work done, and I hope that we can move forward and do that work. But I really think that what is typical of our school district is when something happens, we just want to move on and not really talk about it. And I think we should find out why those five members seemingly made up something and caused, you know, what was the problem there? I mean, what is the issue? Who was behind it? I think you owe that to the community to figure out what was going on. Because while all that, those adults were causing that fuss, students with learning disabilities were being put aside. And I find that offensive because there's real work to be done, and I don't think that adults should come to a meeting and say their stomach hurts. I mean, they could resign if they're so uncomfortable. There's plenty of people in the community that would step up and serve. So, I hope that we can move forward and focus on what the needs of the students are, which is what should be the focus of our efforts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sean Fernandez. I am a special education professional at George Mason High School. I would like to thank my colleagues for this opportunity to represent them today, as well as the board for hearing. I would also like to thank the entire Falls Church City community for producing the best and brightest kids around. Every individual works together as a whole to achieve this greatness, which is exemplified by the employees. Falls Church City Public School employees contribute to the success of each student in our nationally recognized school system. We're working harder than ever to sustain the support needed to maintain this level of excellence. To reflect the ever-growing demand, SEEK recommends some improvements. First, a step for all employees. A step in pay would acknowledge our valuable contributions and help advance our careers. Second, SEEK recommends a cost of living increase to all employees who are topped out of their scales. This would greatly benefit the most dedicated employees who have served the longest in Falls Church City public schools. Next, SEEK requests an adjustment to the percentage paid for health benefits by part-time employees. We recommend that part-time employees be offered health benefits at the same percentage premium as those working forty hours a week. Falls Church City Public Schools needs to stay competitive with their neighboring school districts by providing improved benefits. This would keep and attract essential employees for the long term. Finally, SEEK requests adequate staffing to meet the demands of continued student enrollment. As student population increases and square footage of schools continue to increase, it is impertinent to ensure that adequate support is met. SEEK remains committed to ensuring that compensation, both salary and benefits, continue to increase for everyone. This commitment motivates, retains, and develops valued employees and creates an environment that attracts talent and diversity. SEEK would like to thank the superintendent and school board for their continued commitment to support employees. Thank you for the opportunity to have input into the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fernandez. Next, we will hear from Eek.
Good evening. I'm Dave Sikora, and I'm representing Eek. I'm the chairperson this year. I also am a kindergarten teacher at Mount Daniel. I want to say that you do have our budget recommendations, but I have a few other comments that I'd like to add in addition to the ones we sent over last week. This has historically been a time for school representatives to stand before you and ask that the schools be fully funded, that the schools are provided with the materials and infrastructure necessary for maintaining and growing our high level of instruction. We like to ask that the process to close the gap between surrounding school districts and Falls Church City in regards to teacher salaries and benefits is continued, and that all of this comes together in the best interest of our students. It's understood that difficult choices must be made in regards to how city money is spent, and we respect the time and thought that you put into these yearly decisions. In the past, representatives from each grade level were consulted regarding specific instructional needs and budget recommendations, and although it is my duty to represent all professional staff, I think it's inappropriate for me to stand before you tonight and list the specific needs of different teachers and schools. What I am comfortable asking for tonight is that there is a commitment to increased communication between teachers, administrators, and school board members. I'm asking for a stronger effort from school board members to visit the schools regularly and open an ongoing dialogue between yourselves and building staff. For example, choosing between the importance of small class size or a salary increase is nearly impossible for dedicated professionals. Personal compensation is important. Teachers have families, mortgages, and healthcare expenses, but we also care deeply about all of our students and their many diverse learning needs. When teachers are asked about these choices, it can feel that it's being suggested that one issue can be more important than the other, the well-being of our students versus the well-being of ourselves and our families. Rather than asking teachers to make these impactful budget choices, my hope is that we can expand the opportunities of teachers, for teachers to honestly express not only their instructional and personal needs, but also to have diverse forums throughout the school year to do so. Also, with an increased dialogue, the school board will undoubtedly gain greater insight into the many intangible incentives for teachers to work and stay in Falls Church City. These intangibles include using a collaborative model for instruction, working in an environment that honors and focuses on teachers' input, as well as a respect and trust in teachers' expertise in guiding the development of instructional programs. These are only a few examples of some of the important non-monetary benefits that distinguish our small school district and our additional factors in maintaining a highly qualified and motivated staff. I'd like to conclude with this question. Why should Falls Church City schools be the destination for the most qualified, innovative, and professionally fulfilled educators in the nation? Together, we can answer this important question with regular and thoughtful collaboration between the school board, administrators, school staff, and our community. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sikora. And now, the Administrative Employee Advisory Committee Budget Recommendations. Mr. Bird, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, let me say thanks to Ms. Carney and Mr. Sharp on behalf of my colleagues at Jesse Thackeray, at Mount Daniel, at Mary Ellen Henderson, TJ, and at George Mason High School for your selfless dedication to our students, our most precious gift in this community. So, thank you from the bottom of our heart. We couldn't do what we do without you and your many, many years of service, from attending events to coming and standing shoulder to shoulder with us as we've contemplated difficult issues over the years. We greatly appreciate your support for us. Mr. Sharp, please continue to come to games. We love that you are willing to sit with the hype squad. We're just waiting for the day when you'll paint your face black and red and storm the court with the students. Please walk down the bleachers and run out on the court, though. So, thank you for your service. The Administrative Educators Advisory Committee would like to present the following recommendations regarding salaries and benefits. AEAC recommends a salary improvement for employees to include a full step in the salary scale and a COLA, representative of the Increase in Consumer Price Index. One of the goals of Falls Church City Public Schools is to recruit and retain the most qualified and professional staff. These salary improvements are critical for this goal. These additional monies will keep Falls Church City Public Schools competitive with surrounding jurisdictions. And then, lastly, AEAC recommends that we continue to offer low student-to-teacher ratio, believing that it best supports the collective mission to provide engaging, challenging, and relevant instruction to support students throughout academic settings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. I'll note here that we are at 7:13 now, and I think we can make it through, but we're going to have to move quickly. So, the closed meeting, somebody move us into closed.
Sorry, one quick question. Are we going to be getting a letter from the advisory committee? We did not get on Board Docs. We didn't have a letter.
We do not have an AEAC.
Yeah.
From Mr. Bird.
I was just wondering if Eek was going to send a letter as well? We didn't have one on Board Docs, and sometimes things don't show up. I'm just wondering. You don't have to, but just checking. Okay. That's fine.
If you would like to submit one, you're more than welcome to. All right, now, would somebody move us into closed, please?
And we are in here for closed. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, a move that the board convened a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff resignations, E-PED assignment, and a leave of absence, and legal matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2. Section 2.2-3711A28 for the discussion or consideration of records excluded from Freedom of Information Act disclosure requirements pursuant to subdivision 11 of Section 2.2-3705.6, which describes, among other things, confidential documents provided pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, specifically for the George Mason/Mary Ellen Henderson Campus Project, and legal matters under Section 2.2-3711A7, in particular, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, in particular, the Mount Daniel Project and pending litigation involving the Special Education Advisory Committee, and further that members-elect Phil Riedinger and Aaron Gill be allowed to participate in this closed session, period.
Wow.
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
And Ms. Ward. Thank you.
And we will be meeting enclosed in here, so if you all could, I'm sorry, excuse me, we'll meet enclosed in the Dogwood Room, and we will then...
Oh, no, no. We're in right here.
Are you going to stay here? Okay, we'll stay here, so if you would excuse us.
I guess I watched some of that.
All right, would somebody move us back into open and certify the closed meetings?
I move that we move to an open meeting.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, none? Okay, and now we have two certifications.
Michael's not locked out, is he? Just making sure. Michael?
Think who?
Oh, I just made sure he's not outside the door. I don't know. Because we lost him and Margaret. I think we really...
No, we lost, we lost.
We really lost Margaret. Okay, okay.
Okay, we're only certifying.
We only should have to certify the one.
We have, okay, yes.
Right.
Well, we had two...
We have two sessions.
Two sessions, one closed. Okay, so we covered everything, so no, just the...
The motion to go into closed meeting.
Was to go for everything.
Right.
All right, we'll certify our one meeting.
Right. Do I read this?
If you please.
All right. Mr. Chairman, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board... He was just trying the stairwell. ...that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
Second, thank you. Sharp, all right.
Okay, Mr. Kimball.
Yes, Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Carney.
Yep.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
And Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, sirs. All right, and madams. We now find ourselves at Item 6, the consent agenda. I would seek unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda.
Do we need to adopt the agenda before we can go to the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, thank you.
I move that we adopt the agenda. Do you want it as presented, or are you guys moving things around?
As amended.
Let's see. Let us, in terms of the...
7.01 and 7.04 are the two.
Yeah. The ones we're going to...
All right, so I move that the board adopt the agenda with the following amendments. One, Item 7.01 on the agenda will be removed, and Item 7.04 on the agenda will be removed.
Second.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carney, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? All right. We now have a modified agenda, so now I would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda as presented, without objections, so ordered. We now move to what will be the new 7.01 draft CIP.
This year in the CIP, and as you remember, we always try to get this approved into the city in December at their request, there's not a lot new in the CIP simply because we, you know, have completed what was previously in our master planning process for Thomas Jefferson, Jesse Thackeray, Mount Daniel, and George Mason MEH expansion are all in play right now, so there are no changes to any of that. The one thing I would draw your attention to, and I did message the school board last weekend, is the sheet that says project funding. And the one project that is new on here, and this is based off of discussions with the school board, is land acquisition at $4 million. And I did have a discussion with Mr. Shields about this. He is aware that this is a request that the school board needs to have in the CIP, and he was understanding of that, and, you know, knows that it is in here. So that is the one big change. And other than that, you'll notice a little bit of formatting differences this year, just with our graphs and everything, trying to get a little bit more detailed with what you looked at in the previous meeting with the seats. I will draw your attention to the one thing at the very back of the CIP that came up tonight, and that is just in the addendum, it does, we do actually have a cost for the HVAC, which would range from $6.5 to $12 million for Mason. This cost is from last year, not this year, and it's just that basic, doesn't include the duct work and all those other things, so this is base price if everything starts to fail, because we were talking about that issue. Also, with roof replacement for George Mason, just to go in and try to do the patch replacement, not the whole roof, that's just over $1 million. And again, these are last year's numbers, not this year, and I just, I wanted to point that out. It's difficult to have the companies come back year after year and keep giving you new quotes. You have to be careful about that, having them quote, and then you don't do the work. So, we did this last year, we have good hard numbers, but again, that is in here just to make sure we know why the MEH and GM project has the timing schedule that it does.
Mr. Ankuma.
Tony, is the $4 million for a specific property, or is it just a plug?
I have put it in there as land acquisition because it would be a closed-session item on what that land would be. Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Carney?
I raised this question with the chairman earlier this evening. The status of the Mount Daniel Project, I'm wondering if we need to put a number in the CIP this year to go into Mount Daniel and make some of the safety and security changes that need to be made.
Or maybe we can use the microphone, please?
Sorry, I thought I was. Sorry. To go in and make some of the safety and security changes to Mount Daniel that really need to be done for the students, since this is being pushed back a year or more.
Dr. Jones?
We could put it in the CIP, but there's, I think right now where we are in the process, if we're talking about, for instance, the sprinklers, you could put it in that small section in the center that doesn't have it, or we would be investing in sprinklers where we have the older section that very well could be demolished, you know, within the next 10 to 12 months. So, I think we would be perhaps to come back and have an amended CIP. We could ask for that once we know the project status. I'd be happy to put it in if the school board wishes that we do that, but that's why I didn't make any changes based on where we are as of today, because that would be another big discussion, because you wouldn't want to do the work anyway, and you couldn't do the sprinkler work until the summer. That would be a summer project.
Yep, so I get it would be a summer project, but I think when we did the referendum, one of the important things to the community was that a part of that renovation was for the safety of the kids and the security of the kids. And so, there are a lot of people kind of on edge this year. And to spin it out for a whole nother year just doesn't feel right to me. I'm only one member of the board, it doesn't feel right to me. I think at the least, we should have, the board should understand what that work would be and how much it would cost, and when it should be done, so we would understand whether we wanted to put it in the CIP or not.
Dr. Jones, do you know what the incremental cost would be for sprinklers in the old section?
No, because we haven't intended to ever put sprinklers in the old section because it was to get demolished. So, I would need to cost that out for us, which we can do quite easily.
Yeah, I mean, I understand not wanting to throw good money after bad, but at this point, I don't know how long it's going to take us to resolve this and get that building built. Could be two years, could be three, right? So, thank you.
All right, well, Dr. Jones, perhaps you could find that out and get back to us and let us know what that would look like? Given that, I...
I'll have it for you next week.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and then we could take that up. With respect to the George Mason HVAC, is that an all-in cost for the HVAC? You said it didn't include duct work. Can it be done if one portion of the building has HVAC problems? Is it like a circulatory system where you got to put a whole new set of lungs and heart in?
There are HVAC units all over the top of the roof. And if you go, obviously where the newer science wing is, they're a little bit better condition, but they're tough to keep going. I mean, even at the beginning of this year, that's where we had to do one of the replacements in the auditorium, because there's three units in there, and convocation, you know, we had the one that was in the back that was out, and it was to the point, they could not fix it, and so we had to invest. And it just depends, if they all start going out, we're struggling with our...
But if the next compressor fails, is the bill for that $6.5 million, or something lower than that?
No, not just one compressor.
Well, in other words, I'm saying, will this fail, will it fail slowly, or will it fail in a majestically huge way that all of a sudden it's $6.5 million?
It's at the point where it could all start failing with, you know, over 18 months.
My bet would be the latter of the two if I had...
Yeah.
That's generally how they go.
Once they start, they kind of...
It's just, it's over.
Timing-wise, yeah. And it depends even on things like what kind of winter are we going to have? How much snow load is on the roof? What's sitting on all those units? I mean, how beat up do they get from, you know, just weather? There's just so many different factors.
Understood, but in terms of modeling, if we wanted to keep this in action for five years, I mean, I assume for $6.5 million, we get a 20-year HVAC system. Yes?
Hmm.
Or something thereabouts?
Yeah, let me read in here what we've actually got built in this quote. So, it doesn't include your wage rates or any abatement, and abatement is huge at Mason. When you go in to start doing stuff like that, we're going to find asbestos. We have in every school that we have, even though we have asbestos certificates that clear the building, and just that alone can shut a building down and be very, very costly. And so, in addition to that, it doesn't have replacing the duct work, which is also really old, and when you have parents that are concerned about allergies and all that sorts of thing, that, you know, if you're going to rip out the entire ceilings to actually go in, you'd want to make sure that we had all the duct work done.
Would it be possible, I don't know how much, obviously he doesn't do HVAC for a living, but maybe have a discussion with Bob Jones and say, what would a five-year HVAC Band-Aid plan look like? I'm just trying to...
See, and this is it. That's really what you're looking at here, is that $6.5, is that a minimum? If, is it not close enough? It's on. Okay, sorry. And I'm so loud, wow. No one ever tells me to get the mic. So, with the HVAC, so with the HVAC, the $6.5 is the low end, and that's why we got a real hard quote last year. And that's based on, you know, at a minimum, if we're not needing to do the duct work, we don't have lots of abatement. Within that $6.5, there is no way to know how many units over a five-year period are going to fail. There's, I mean, if you ask them to come in and tell us, they'll say, you need to do them all. That is what they will tell us. They've been telling us that for the last couple of years. So, I mean, there's not anybody that can give us that hard answer, other than, you know, they're in bad shape. And so, that's the minimum, the $6.5.
But again, I'm sorry to belabor this, but it says, "All costs associated with the removal and replacement of all HVAC equipment with a more efficient system." And it's like, if my left front tire is showing tread wear, I don't need four tires necessarily to get me through the next couple of years. So, I know maybe you can't say exactly what it'll be, but would a compressor mortality rate of X percent mean it's going to cost us $2 million over five years? I know, again...
Well, you don't need those other three tires fixed unless they go out. I mean...
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You don't need those other three tires fixed unless the other three have problems.
Sure.
I mean, so I think the problem is, you either get the worst-case scenario is the only real firm cost, or you're deciding what figure you want it to be, and then saying, we hope that's how they fail.
It's basically when AAA says they can't fix their tires anymore, and that's what's happening now. I mean...
Okay, well, let's not go into the midnight hours, but if there's a way we could get a better handle on what failing systems at George Mason looks like, that would be helpful. And I don't know what that looks like, and maybe you can say, I can give you, you know, plus or minus, you know, 100%, but this seems to me like the apocalyptic HVAC syndrome, and I'm not sure that it's maybe not a little more nuanced. Maybe it will take $6.5 million to get you through 20 years? I don't know. But do your best and let us know that.
Are you asking me what it costs to put in just a whole brand-new system?
Well, I'm asking, if this is telling you, here are four tires for your old car, and maybe we only need one tire.
Yeah.
Is this, I want to know what a Band-Aid solution would be rather than a more comprehensive solution. And if the board thinks I'm crazy here, please let me know, but...
Honestly, this sounds like the Band-Aid. It sounds like an expensive Band-Aid, but it doesn't include enough stuff to actually fix a major problem. I mean, that's...
Well, and when you put it in perspective, it's just a big building.
Yeah.
And you think, we've got a quote of $2 million for TJ, and 22,000 square feet of that building are brand-new, they don't need any HVAC. They're just, it's really expensive, and it's expensive, expensive work. And that's why we put this number in here last year, because it's probably one of the things that worries us the most, is if they really do start going out at a very fast rate, it's going to be expensive.
Okay.
But I'll see if we can drill down any farther, but sure.
All right, we'll see what you can do on that, and we will revisit this at our next All right, next. New Item 7.02, approval of use of joint planning funds for Tischler, Bice, and Davenport.
This is actually, Tischler, Bice, and Davenport are under contract with the city anyway. They're part of their financial support that they have ongoing, and because they are utilizing them in Phase 1, which means that we are also utilizing them, and because our agreement was, we want to make sure both bodies know where the money's going and who those consultants are, I wanted to get this on here for you tonight. I really should have had it on the last meeting, but because they were already under contract, I just, I didn't think about the agreement that we have, and I just wanted to make sure that I got it in front of you so you know.
Jane, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, I voted no on use of consultant funds at the last meeting. However, since that was roundly rejected, I see that we are on course for having the consultants work proceed at this time, and I assume that this is part of the ongoing consultants that we have engaged. And so, I will vote this time yes, but with, again, some reluctance as to the advisability of having these folks engaged while there are folks who are to come on and get this process into another phase. And I think there are really sufficient documents that we have that are worked up based on what we've, you know, so far been discussing, that the basic decisions are really, really well outlined for us. And I don't know that these details that might be made in the next few weeks would be crucial for us, but I will vote yes in this instance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. I would entertain a motion at this time.
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Carney.
If we approve this in City Council's presence, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be spent, it merely means that staff has the authority to spend it.
I believe this is for authorization, yes.
All right, thank you. I may that the school board approve the use of joint planning funds for Tischler, Bice, and Davenport regarding the GM MEH project.
Thank you, Ms. Carney.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, abstentions? All right, now we will go to Item 7.03, approval of the 2016-2017 school calendar.
Just as a reminder, on our calendar process, we bring together a very large calendar group, has people from all of our schools that come in and really study the calendar. We have to look at how many days are in each quarter, especially in secondary school. We need to look at, what are those dates? For instance, this year, we need to be off on Election Day, because it will be a very large election. We don't like having our children in school on that day. The other day that we look at is inauguration, because that's a day when we have difficulty The other day that we look at is inauguration, because that's a day when we have difficulty trying to get enough subs, and so many children are gone, it's not a quality instructional day. So, we plug all of those in, and then the calendar committee start looking at, what are all the variations and options, based off when we need to have parent conferences for elementary, when they have end of quarter for high school, and they need to have a planning day off. And they come up, they look at the calendar to see what are the options that we can have, and we also have to start after Labor Day. Once they get that calendar together, unless it's a unanimous decision, which it never is, we always have at least two calendars. We take those calendars, and then we put them out to a vote for the entire staff, and generally, it usually goes with what the calendar committee actually was recommending, at least since I've been here. I think every year it has, and the calendar committee was supportive of Option B, which is, in fact, it was about 60/40 was the vote, where the staff agreed with the calendar committee. Basically, the big thing is, it gets you out a little bit earlier in June, and you have a shorter winter break, instead of having a longer winter break and going a little bit later in June. And we're talking about just a couple of days, but people really get kind of funny about going an extra two or three days in June. It's just, I don't know why, it's just, you know, it seems like a lot later than it is. And the calendar last year, and this year, and next year are both still in that challenging kind of realm, because where Labor Day falls, and... But we're getting back on cycle, so hopefully this will be the last... Probably next year will be tough as well. So, we are recommending Option B, based off staff input.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions?
The total number of days is the same as for fiscal year that we're in?
That's correct. We have 182 instructional days.
Okay, I thought we may have, if I recall, Mr. Lawrence may have encouraged us to not put in one of those this year. Was that because we were going to 183?
No, that was for requiring teachers on-site. We did take a day off of that, but that's different than instructional days.
That was in the budget last year.
Right.
What we were going to add, instead of having our unscheduled days, we were going to have another one of those, be professional development. If you remember, several years ago, we used to have nine unscheduled days, and now, Marty, are we six? I'm just... I'm trying to think if we went, because we changed at the end of last year. I think it's six unscheduled. But even with those six unscheduled, just as a reminder, their very first day of the year is a flex day, and so is their last day, so they really still have eight. Because I allow them to do that. If they come and work a day in the summer, which every teacher does, we allow them to flex that first day. They just have to be sure they let their principals know that they were there, and they actually worked the day, and that's because they get mad at each other if somebody else didn't actually show up and do what they're supposed to. And then on the last day, if they get checked out over a weekend or an evening, and get checked out with their principals, they don't... The last day is a flex day as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve Option B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Before we move on, I would just say, with respect to the wisdom of the King's Dominion Rule, I will point out there is a 2016 National Youth Science Camp to which two Virginia students are invited. It's an all-expenses-paid program that allows for computer-oriented activities for between June 17th and July 10th. It looks like an extraordinarily worthy and valuable program, and it's only available to students who can attend the entire program, starting on Friday, June 17th, 2016, departing on July 10th. So, this is one of the kinds of damage that the King's Dominion Rule causes, because our students are rendered ineligible to participate. This is wrong. This should change, and we should have the discretion to choose our calendar times to meet the needs of our students. And with that, we will move on to the next item. Item 7.04, Construction Update.
I have very little here tonight, other than, of course, we're still working through the Mount Daniel process, and we are working to get out a community update. I was waiting on some information from Bon Council that we got today, just so that... We're trying to do one note that's very clear, based off some questions that the community had, so we will work to get that out before the end of the week, now that we have those answers.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Any questions? All right, now we come to future agenda topics. Anybody interested in talking about that right now?
Shorter agendas.
Shorter agendas, excellent idea. I will appoint a task force. Superintendent's report.
Of course, I'll keep it...
Tweet-length report, please.
Yes, yes, I will keep it very short. I do just want to say, thank you to Mary Beth Conley for bringing the American Institute of Architectural event last night. The people that were there were very interested in high school, especially construction,